We will get started as I know that there is a finance subcommittee meeting after this and we have to end promptly at five fifteen. So wel- welcome to the audit subcommittee of the Springfield City Council. It is now four sixteen on Monday, April eleventh. And so auditor No, uh, thank you so much for being here. I think we're also joined by Caffo TJ Plant. And I apologize, eleven oh six seven four.
Diana Miltowski, I'm the acting insurance director.
Okay, Diana, um, who is the Miltowski, who is the acting insurance director. Thank you so much for being here. Uh, we are also joined by Counselor Allen, who is a member of this committee, as well as Counselor Govan and Counselor Walsh. So thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Uh, auditor No, uh, who submitted his two thousand and twenty-three uh, annual audit plan for the city council's review. Uh, this document was sent to committee as folks had a few questions and wanted to get some answers on a couple of areas. Auditor No, so, uh, just to frame the, the, the meeting and, and kinda try to expedite it. The questions, auditor No, that were pertinent, or at least that I heard at our city council meeting, the first question was around, um, the fraud hotline. And it was a question from Mike Fenton regarding the fraud hotline and the number of cases that we had. Um, I know at least from the documentation that I have, uh, in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it looks like there were thirty-one allegations that were submitted to the fraud hotline and twenty-eight of them that, that were closed, and I'm not sure about the other three. So if you could just kinda touch on those on that area and correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure. Oh, thank you, Chairman Hurst. With, with respect to the fraud hotline, uh, we, uh, every year allocate about twenty percent of our time to maintaining the fraud hotline and performing investigations. Now, that is just an estimate, uh, that, that, um, allocation changes from year to year. We do place a high priority, uh, on the, on this type of work because, uh, it is immediate and we try to address it, uh, in that fashion in order to stop any, um, outflows of, um, cash that have been misappropriated. Um, I, I would say in fiscal year sixteen, we spent twenty-nine percent of our time maintaining the fraud hotline and performing investigations. And then I believe in fiscal year twenty-one, it was down to closer to ten. So that number varies from year to year, but twenty percent is a figure that we have in the past used um, for our budgetary purposes.
Got it. Do we have actual numbers, uh, for twenty twenty-two or?
For, uh, tw- uh, twenty twenty-two, I believe we're running around, uh, three percent of our time. Um, it's, it's, we haven't had, um, a lot of activity, but again, that could change on a dime. We can get, uh, a tip where it results in a full-blown investigation. So, uh, we just don't know, uh, uh, about, uh, what we're going to receive, but it's imperative to, um, us to maintain the fraud hotline as mandated by city ordinance.
Got it. Um, and can you send us that information, uh, Young, with respect to the number of, um, allegations that you've gotten thus far?
Uh, I was going to present it to you as part of the activities update today, and I will cer- certainly send it out to the entire city council, just to give you an update a- as to what we've been working on.
Perfect. Um, the one thing I didn't want to do, order to know, and that Counselor Walsh, I see you, you have your hand raised. I just, I didn't wanna go, go in, um, rehash a lot of what it is that you presented uh, at the city council meeting. So I can certainly give you the floor, but I, I did wanna streamline things if possible. Counselor Walsh.
Well, I'm just curious to know, uh, what kinds of things the fraud hotline asked you to investigate? Do today, Counselor Hurst? I can't hear you.
Sure, absolutely. If, if there are any questions, um, please, uh, feel free to ask them.
So if I can answer that, uh, we get, uh, various allegations on our fraud hotline from misuse of resources um, by city employees, um, ethical violations. Uh, sometimes we, we get complaints from citizens, uh, regarding items that are not within the scope of our review. For example, um, uh, I guess a common, uh, tip we get is uh, misuse of housing stipends, um, um, offered by, uh, the state. Uh, that, uh, is not within the scope, and we usually refer that out, uh, to the appropriate state agency. Uh, but again, uh, we get tips from citizens, employees, um, directors, sometimes counselors. So, uh, we'd like to make our hotline accessible to all.
And do they usually bear fruit, these, uh?
So we, we predicate, uh, every allegation uh, to ensure that, uh, there is some validity in the allegation. I- if we, uh, if there is uh, validity to the allegation, then it moves on to a, uh, an investigation.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Auditor No, why don't you give us, um, a quick overview of what you were going to present with respect to the fraud out, I mean, to the fraud hotline? And then also a condensed version of the activities that you were going to report out on?
If I could, um, um, make a recommendation, um, Counselor Hurst, um, I, I, I had laid out uh, agenda items that I wanted to go over with the audit committee, which includes our, um, activities update. Uh, but I wanted to start off with, uh, a most, most recent completed review of the city's, uh, health insurance program. Uh, it's an audit that we recently completed, and we have TJ Plant, uh, on the phone as well as, uh, the insurance director Diane McCosky to, uh, answer any questions from the audit committee. Uh, so with that said, I'd like to proceed with the health insurance benefit review and move on to the activities update, which I can talk about. Some of the activities that we, uh, have been working on, including, um, the fraud, uh, results.
Okay.
Okay, sure. Um, if, could I share my screen, uh, if that's possible, Counselor Hurst?
You can. Um, do I need to give you?
Um, let's see if I can have that permission here. I don't see the option to share my screen. Let's see if I can share it. All right, I, I do see that option, so let me see if I can share it. So everyone should, should see, uh, the health insurance benefit review screen?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, I'll get into it. Um, at first, I wanna thank, uh, the benefits department and Caffo TJ Plant and, um, um, helping us do this review. Uh, we did this review uh, as part of our audit plan, and we had a lot of help from the benefits department, uh, in completing, completing the review. They were very cooperative. Uh, we, uh, as I mentioned, uh, is part of our audit plan. That's why we did the audit. Um, moving on to page two, just on, on some background. The city offers a health insurance, uh, coverage for its employees through the GIC health insurance. Um, I'm moving on to page three. Um, the year we looked at was, um, fiscal year, um, twenty twenty-one. Active participants in the health insurance program, approximately eighty-one hundred as of May two thousand twenty-one. And the monthly gross premium, approximately seven point million, seven point four million, or approximately eighty-eight million annually. Um, our objectives for this review, uh, was to assess the internal controls of the administration of the health insurance benefit program. Um, the methodology we used, uh, we, uh, compared, uh, data from the GIC uh, health insurance invoice to, uh, internal accounting records in Munis. We interviewed, uh, staff. We also did some detailed testing of, uh, benefit records. So with that, um, I will go into the actual findings itself. Finding one. Uh, we noted that, uh, there were numerous variances between the GIC invoices and the city's, uh, accounting system, Munis. So one A, uh, talks about, there were payroll deductions, uh, but, um, there were payroll deductions for employees to participate in GIC health insurance. Um, but, um, these participants weren't on the GIC invoice. So why is that problematic? Well, because it exposes of the city, uh, to pay medical claims. You had, uh, participants paying into the program, but they're not actually registered in the program. So there's exposure there. So for active employees, we calculated a potential underpayment of, uh, approximately eighty-three hundred to the GIC, assuming that the GIC invoice is right. Uh, conversely, uh, an overpayment of two thousand dollars, assuming GIC is wrong. Uh, for retirees, uh, there was an underpayment of approximately a hundred and three thousand to GIC, assuming the GIC invoice is right. Conversely, uh, overpayment of twenty-six thousand, assuming the GIC invoice is wrong. So I wanna move on to the next page. Uh, finding B. Um, there were, there were no payroll deductions, but, uh, there were participants on the GIC invoice. So why is this an issue? Well, because participants are getting a free ride. The city is not collecting premiums from employees to pay for their health insurance. So, uh, with this, uh, we had a potential, uh, underpayment of employee premiums of thirty-two thousand, uh, to the city, assuming the GIC invoice is right. Uh, and an overpayment of a hundred and twenty-four thousand to GIC, assuming the GIC invoice is wrong. For retirees, uh, we had a potential underpayment of a hundred and seven thousand dollars of retiree premiums to the city, assuming the GIC invoice is right. Conversely, uh, we had an overpayment of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand to GIC, assuming the GIC invoice is wrong. So, um, again, you know, the recommendation here is, uh, we, uh, we want the benefits department to, uh, look into these discrepancies and, um, identify, um, the, uh, resolution or, or find out the, uh, uh, correct resolution to these identified discrepancies. And also to, uh, implement, uh, a reconciliation procedure, procedure monthly. Uh, I believe the, uh, TJ, uh, Caffo and benefits department uh, have hired a consultant to stop, help with the reconciliation process, and they've been working through some of the variances that we've identified. Uh, so, uh, finding C, um, there were some, um, discrepancies in terms of health plan setup. So the, uh, in Munis compared to what's on the invoice. So, for example, you had employees that signed up for Health New England when the GIC invoice said, uh, they, uh, signed up for something else like, uh, Unicare. So, um, there wasn't much of a difference here, uh, didn't net too much, like three hundred, uh, dollars, um, in underpayments, but still a discrepancy. And moving on to the, um, page seven. Uh, finding two, uh, there were, um, similar lines in terms of discrepancies. Uh, there were discrepancies in, in data, uh, in Munis and GIC, especially as it relates to social security numbers. You want social security numbers to match up, uh, in both databases, just to ensure that we're not, uh, duplicating employees. Uh, and, uh, finding B on page eight. Um, it's not a lot, but somewhat embarrassing. Uh, there was a dead person classified in Munis that, uh, the city was paying insurance premium for in GIC. Uh, so that resulted in, in an overpayment close to nine thousand dollars. And finding three. So finding three has to do with trying to improve, uh, the HR's process in terms of, um, uh, recording employee, uh, data. Uh, we noted that, uh, the process was, uh, highly, um, I guess inconsistent and resulted in a lot of discrepancies and, and naming conventions. So moving on to, but, um, finding B. We noted that, um, again, looking at data, uh, between, uh, between databases, it's not being streamlined. And C, um, we noted in employee master files, uh, there were some, um, dates, uh, that, that appeared to be off. And the last finding, finding four, uh, we noted, uh, that in Munis, um, departments have access to, uh, benefits information. And we noted that there were forty-six employees, uh, who were outside of the benefits department that had access to the employee database that had change rights. Now, that's way too many employees. Y- you wanna lock down that database to, um, those employees in the benefit departments that are, that should have, uh, access and the privileges to change, uh, benefits information. So what we're recommending here is that, um, the, um, benefits department worked with, uh, the IT department in locking that, um, database down. Uh, so, uh, going back to finding three, in terms of streamlining the HR process and classifying and recording employee data, uh, our recommendation there wa- was that, um, the city, uh, hire a benefits consultant from Munis. Uh, it's the accounting system that we use to, um, obtain best practices, uh, in recording, uh, employee data uh, in the benefits and HR departments, uh, which the city has committed to doing so. And that's it. I, I opened it up to the floor for any questions.
Thank you, order to know. Uh, just before we get to the counselors, just a quick question. How many hours did this particular audit, uh, take, order to know, since I know I think we started this one in fiscal year twenty-one as well?
Yeah, it's, uh, I'd, I'd say, uh, uh, close to five hundred hours. I, I don't have the exact figures, but it, it, it was the timely, uh, uh, audit because we're dealing with large amounts of data. And, uh, I only assigned one person to, uh, uh, work on this. And it, as you can see, it does have a financial impact uh, to the city. So, uh, it, it is an audit, uh, that, uh, we deemed worthwhile, cause there's definitely a financial impact.
Thank you. Are there any questions, uh, from my colleagues? Uh, Counselor Walsh?
There's still, the screen sharing is still.
Order to know, can you stop sharing your screen?
Uh, I, I was just gonna make, I'm, I'm kinda surprised that there's so many discrepancies. I, I mean, uh, I, I would have thought that a lot of that information, social security numbers, dead people uh, would be a little tighter. I, I'm actually surprised. And then, of course, there's a, there's a cost to the city, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and that cost probably hadn't been calculated a- anywhere. Would that be correct?
We, we did quantify, uh, the potential, uh, costs to the city. Um, so, and, and that's what the benefit department is looking into to, um, um, resolve these discrepancies that we've identified.
So Counselor Walsh, I had comment. So this is exactly why we have internal audit doing, uh, checks on departments, uh, is to is to do exactly this, uncover holes in our processes and systems. About three years ago or so, we moved, um, benefits out from HR under a direct report to me because it's really a financial function to reconcile and to kinda make sure reconciliations weren't happening. And so we actually um, brought back the old benefits director, uh, Jen Wisher, to, to assist as a consultant. And we have John Manzi, who was a database guru, we brought back from retirement to assist uh, and doing a lot of the, uh, data analysis that helps us figure this out long before. Uh, so we agree with you. This is more than we want, and Young said it right. It's embarrassing you have a dead person, um, uh, that you're paying for because.
On the voter rolls, you didn't expect it, um, the insurance rolls.
Yeah, so this is, uh, it's been a heavy, heavy lift to, uh, start digging out from sins of the past in the benefits department.
Uh, TJ, I mean, you could have some liability here, right? If people thought they were covered for something and they, and they weren't?
So yeah, so we actually, um, took, took care of a lot of those issues under the life insurance policies that Autumn, that Young did last time, and same here is like, we, we've never asked an employee um, to pay us back for a mistake that was not caught on either GIC's end or our end. Um, so we've always either covered it or the flip side has happened. We've given a pretty, pretty substantial check to an employee for having overcharged them. So.
Right, right. And, and the, uh, I believe, uh, auditor No, you said forty-six unauthorized u- users?
Yes, users that have change rights to the benefits, uh, database. So they could change uh, a benefit, uh, without anyone knowing that a change was made.
Yeah, and that's unacceptable from, uh, operations perspective. They, they can, they should have read-only ass- access. Uh, and there should only be a select few that can actually make any changes to the database. Uh, that has been corrected.
And, 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 uh, you know, and how is your relationship with the insurance companies that were, you were dealing with? Were they hard to work with?
Yeah, I mean, Diane, you can answer that question. GIC has not been a challenge whatsoever.
No, GIC has been wonderful. They're very helpful and answer any questions and help us when they can. Matter of fact, they're going to accept a, a spreadsheet with all of the social security corrections and just enter them for us.
No, that's good to know, cause you sometimes hear horror stories about trying to deal with insurance companies.
No, they've been great.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, uh, Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Allen might be muted. Let's see, Counselor Allen.
Yeah, hold on.
You, you were all set, Counselor Allen.
He just muted now, though.
So why don't we go to you, Counselor Whitfield, and then we'll circle back around to Counselor Allen?
Okay, un- unless he's ready.
Doesn't look ready.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Some of these items aren't new to me, cause some were on the audit when I was, um, chair of the audit committee. So, um, they were up and coming, um, items that were going to be audited um, when I first joined the council. So it's good to see that they have been audited now. Um, so one question that I had for you, um, Young, is, um, about the hours that you have lumped together?
So can we hold off Counselor Whitfield on that until we get to, yes? Yes, they're, they're just focusing on the health benefits. Um, but that definitely is something that, that we want addressed.
Well, no, health benefits aren't new news to me, so I know they've been working on this for a while and getting the, um, system updated and, um, so no, this isn't, this isn't new, so I'm good.
All right. Um, Counselor, uh, Allen, are you ready to go?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes. Okay, great. Sorry. Um, yeah, mine was just on, you know, when there, when there is fines or discrepancies and we have to come up with money. Does that come out of the general fund or, or is there a special fund for these kind of mistakes? Or how does that work?
Uh, we have a health insurance trust fund that we, uh, pay things through that flows through that fund. So where we take the employee deductions, we add in the employer max and that creates in a special fund.
Okay. So the things that were, that, um, Mr. No mentioned before would have been covered by that mainly?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, Counselor Govan.
Thank you very much. And thank you for that presentation. Um, so I had two questions. One of, um, one of them is that, uh, the, so many users having access to, uh, making changes in the system, did that cost the city any money?
That doesn't work, we're of.
I don't believe so. I'm not aware of any changes that have been made that have been malicious or costly to the city.
Okay, thank you. And then the other one is, um, so you said that there are some employees who don't have GIC, so have other kind of, um, insurances. What's going to happen with that? Are they gonna keep, uh, like you said, Unicare or so, or are they gonna have to go to GIC?
Well, everyone has to go to G. Sorry, go ahead, Young.
Uh, I was gonna, for those, uh, employees that we've identified as having payroll deductions, but not on the GIC invoice, the benefits department is resolving those discrepancies to see if they should have invoice. I mean, should have insurance, and if they're, if they should, should have, uh, insurance, then they'll certainly be enrolled, uh, just to make, uh, what would GIC?
I think TJ, no, I think TJ was answering the question, because you said that some employees have Unicare and not GIC.
Well, yeah, see, everyone has GIC. That's the kinda umbrella organization, but we have like nine plans.
I see.
Boys can elect into. And what the audit looked at was exactly what, uh, Young is saying is if Zida, you're paying for health insurance, but we're not getting invoice, we're taking a deduction. We wanna make sure you, you, you elected to have that coverage.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's great. Thank you so much. Thank you, uh, care.
Thank you, Zida. And if there are, our Counselor Govan, sorry, and if there are no more, uh, further questions, thank you, order to know. Uh, and everyone else for your due diligence on this particular issue. Seems like it was a worthwhile audit, uh, for both those employees and for the city of Springfield. So we appreciate your efforts. Uh, auditor No, for the sake of time, if we could just give, um, just a, a, a brief excerpt on the uh, fraud hotline as well as the activities for your fiscal year twenty twenty-three, uh, audit plan?
Oh, so if I can share my screen again, uh, just to go over our, our activities, I'll, I'll be very brief.
I think it's on you, cause I didn't give you the ability to share the last time.
Okay. All right, so you should see my screen on the status report of the fiscal year, um, twenty twenty audit plan. So I'll, I'll get right into it. So, um, our activities are classified into three categories, carryover from prior years, ongoing activities and new activities. So to start out with carryover assignments, we recently completed a cybersecurity audit at Springfield Public Schools, and that report was presented to the, um, Springfield Public Schools, uh, by Wolfen Company. Uh, they're the consultants, uh, that did the, um, cybersecurity review. Uh, we took a look at the, uh, flexible spending, um, account reconciliations, uh, performed by WageWorks. No issues there, uh, when they transferred the funds over to the, uh, new, uh, Flex FSA, uh, Plan Administrator, American Fidelity. Um, we recently completed the health insurance audit that I just presented. Uh, right, right now, we have, uh, a review being co-sourced by, uh, external auditors taking a look at the inventory management at DPW and at the Parks Department. They should be, uh, done with that review sometime, uh, this spring. Uh, moving on to the next page, uh, there is a pending investigation, uh, that is, uh, with the USAG and related to the golf course. So, um, that is still, uh, in process. With respect to ongoing assignments, we look at a quarterly investments, no reportable findings. We maintain the city's fraud hotline. So from July one, two thousand twenty-one through December two thousand twenty-one, we had nine allegations that were submitted, eight of which have been closed without, uh, any action. And there is one allegation we are currently predicating. We're waiting for a response, um, uh, in, from a related department. Uh, next, uh, we're responsible to ensure the annual audit of the city's financial statement is complete. Uh, that audit has been done for fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, and that will be presented to the audit committee uh, sometime this spring. Uh, next page. Um, uh, we're, as I mentioned in the audit plan, uh, we audit the, uh, student activities, uh, this year. Uh, FY twenty-two is the year, uh, that we're doing the review. Uh, we are expected to start it, uh, this spring. And that's basically to comply with, uh, Mass General laws. New assignments, uh, we took on a special request from the audit committee on the cannabis review, which we presented in December. We're in the process of a payroll audit. Uh, likewise, we're, we're gonna do an overtime audit. Um, we're in the process of doing, uh, a review of the athletic fees at Springfield Public Schools. A cybersecurity audit review, uh, is going to, um, occur at Springfield Police Department, uh, sometime this spring, and that's gonna be co-sourced with Wolfen Company. Uh, and this spring, we are also slated to, uh, start a review of fleet maintenance at DPW. And, um, we had two engagements that we moved into the FY twenty-three audit plan. And that's the review of cash handling at CY Arena and some follow-up reviews at HSS, TJO and the Springfield Police Department related to the DOT and Quinn programs. So, any questions?
Thank you, uh, order to know. This is a little different from the information that I think I've received in advance of our city council meeting. Is that a different document?
That's the audit plan that you received for FY twenty-three. This is just an, uh, an activities update for the current fiscal year.
Okay, okay. Um, so with that said, I guess it's just a quick question that I have, and then I'll move, uh, move on to Counselor Whitfield, who I believe has her hands, hand raised. Um, wh- out of these audits that we are going to do in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, um, how, how many of those audits have been requested by either the mayor or the administration? And if so, if so, which ones are they?
So, um, if, if I could, so, uh, uh, the FY twenty, so the activities, uh, report here, wha- what I just went over is just activities that we worked on and that were on the FY twenty-two or last year's audit plan. So, um, everything on this audit plan, uh, or I guess our activities, with the exception of the uh, the flexible spending account review, um, that was requested by Ca- uh, the CFO. He, he just wanted to make sure that uh, the appropriate funds were going to be transferred over to the new FSA provider. Uh, we didn't incur a lot of time uh in doing that review, but everything else was determined in-house by internal audit.
So when I look at the audit plan and I'm looking at your audit plan fiscal year twenty twenty-three that you sent to, to us.
So, uh, could, could we, could I just, I have my s- s- screen share here and I can uh
That would be great.
Audit plan for FY twenty-three. Okay, so if I could just do that, so we could have something to top, uh, look at, so.
Because the audit plan is what the council has to approve. And so I think that is, just for those that are listening at home, I think that is certainly more relevant uh as it relates to my colleagues, because this is what it is that we are going to approve at our next regular meeting, hopefully.
Yes, so, um, I don't know if you see my screen, uh, screen now.
I see.
It says annual audit plan for fiscal year twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the, that's the document that I presented uh last week at city council. So, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the committee uh.
So I, so I guess my question remains the same. Um, from this particular audit plan, uh, are there any audits that have been specifically requested from the administration?
No.
So no audits as of yet, and I, and I only say that because when I look at audit plan twenty twenty-one and I don't have twenty twenty-two in front of you, in front of us, there were at least three recommendations in twenty twenty-three, one being what you just went over, which was the health insurance, uh, the city benefits and the health insurance audit, which took, uh, you said five hundred hours. And then I'm also looking at two others that were submitted, um, which were, I believe it was the police overtime as well as um the uh police incentive pay program. And so I guess my question is um, there, there, there are no audits as of yet from the administration for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Is that correct? And none being carried over as well?
That's correct.
Okay, um, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Young, the overtime audit, is that for all overtime in the city of Springfield or um particular department?
All overtime.
All overtime, okay. How many hours do, do you have there?
Um, I don't know offhand, but uh, uh, I believe it's about like uh over four hundred hours. That, that's a big audit as well. Process is complicated and we want to make sure that we have enough coverage.
Does that include overtime that is um distributed via grants as well? Or just the general fund?
All, everything, grants and all the general funds.
Okay, um, is there any audit being planned for the procurement process?
We have, we've already done a, a review of the procurement process and that was, I believe, uh, conducted in fiscal year eighteen. Uh, and I could, you could go on our website uh and um see uh our report related to that audit.
Okay, I, I will look at it and um so what, can you just explain the process if um counselors or you know, anyone at the minute, at, at the administration level want to request an audit?
Yeah, so for us, we look at the actual request. We don't really, we're not really concerned as to who it's coming from. If it has an impact on city operations, then we wanna uh, you know, look at it. Uh, we, so uh, and when we budgeted hours for a special request, we're just looking at the subject matter in itself as a, we don't really care if it's coming from management, city council, or someone in the, in the public. It's just looking at the subject matter.
And you, you usually like that in a letter form, right?
Yeah, so i- i- if, if anyone uh makes a request, I will give it due consideration and uh, and try, I will, I will not disregard any requests. I'll, I'll consider it. And um if um it is, I guess, um, going to move forward and I'll certainly uh, uh, be in contact with the requester, or i- if it's not, then I'll certainly document the reasons why um, it didn't meet uh our audit request. And not to say that I won't ever consider it, it, it could come, um, you know, be reconsidered sometime in the future.
And if something's been audited, how long do you wait to like re-audit something?
I, I gotta give, I try to give departments uh at least twelve to fourteen months to implement um corrective um procedure, actions.
No, I'm sorry, like you said, procurement happened in twenty eighteen, so if someone requested that procedure to be audited again, how long do you wait from twenty eighteen? Like ten years to re-audit, five years?
Uh, if someone makes the request, uh, and there, there's a, a legitimate concern, we will reevaluate. Uh, and if, if, if we feel as though there are still um procedures that haven't been implemented, or there's still, there's still risks to the city and it has an impact on the city, we will re-audit it. We won't wait. If, if it's, if the risk is immediate, we'll address it accordingly.
So for example, if I requested to have the ARPA fund process um evaluated, even though that process is happening now, you would still audit the process?
Well, um, I, our methodology is to um not to audit areas that other agencies are going to audit or have audited. So ARPA, I believe they're, they're, they're scheduled to have federal audit here, federal auditors at the city, I think, within the next three months or so, so they're going to be all over looking at those um grants. Likewise, you'll have, you have our external auditors also looking at ARPA, uh, ARPA grants as part of their uh audit requirements. So we try not to duplicate our efforts uh when it comes to auditing. But if there's a particular, I think, allegation with respect to waste, we will uh definitely predicate uh that allegations to see if uh there's an issue there. And you, you could report that in our fraud hotline or send me uh an email expressing your concerns and I, 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 I do want to assure you that it will be addressed.
Okay, and then my final question is, if there's a particular agency that continuously get funds from the city, like um almost every single time and we sent you that information, would you audit something like that?
Well, I'd have to, you know, without knowing the particulars, I, I will certainly, you know, consider it and see, oh, you know, if there's an impact to the city, uh, if there are issues, i- if there are issues that have an impact to the city, then uh, you know, and if, if it's worthwhile uh, in terms of meeting our audit requirements, I would certainly look at it. I don't care where the uh request is coming from, as long as it has an impact uh on the city, uh, I will consider it.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Whitfield, and so, uh, Order to Know, uh, thank you for um for clarifying that. And so if I understand you correctly, because that was one of my questions in terms of what is that process, right? So we have three hundred and sixty hours of unscheduled audits. I know previously I requested an audit uh with respect to the marijuana selection process and you certainly, um, you know, you allowed that, that audit to move through, but I know there were a number of, or there certainly were some other counselors that, that raised some concerns in terms of how uh, what is the procedure that needs to be followed in terms of submitting an audit request to your office? And so the question is, you know, does it have to go through the audit subcommittee? Uh, does the chair have to request it, or can anyone on the city council request it? And, and then the, the follow-up question is, is sort of how do you determine, you know, what audits are valid? And what audits aren't?
So, uh, anyone can request uh an audit to my department. Uh, we evaluate each audit of request case by case to see if there is a, an impact on the city using our uh risk matrix, to see if there's a financial impact and, and whether, um, you know, uh, if we don't uh address it, then what's the worst thing that could happen? So there is a methodology by which we follow to determine if the audit should be considered to be included in our audit plan. Um, so anyone could make a request from uh for audit and the, the city ordinance certainly recommends that city management and any, uh, everyone use the resources of the internal audit department. So as I mentioned, the audit plan is a living document. It could be changed mid-year based upon a, a nature of a priority item. It, it, it could be an, uh, an assignment that has a major impact to the city and that would be moved, moved up the uh priority list on our audit plan. But um, as the director of internal audit, I determine how to allocate the resources for my department and which audits to take on. And, and I do so by following a risk methodology in terms of which audits I should uh um take on. And again, as I, I want to reiterate, I don't, it doesn't matter where the request is coming from. It's the subject matter and whether it has an impact on the city.
No, absolutely, and I think my question was whether it had to actually be approved by a majority vote of the council. And it sounds to me like what it is that we're doing is repu- we're approving the plan itself. And within that plan, there is sort of a, a, a gray area that says there are unscheduled audits. And so we're sort of relying in good faith that Auditor No will take these requests under advisement and uh follow up and follow through on those requests as, you know, a- as you see fit. Um, but what, what, you know, the, the, the issue that I originally had was that do they, you know, if somebody has a request uh mid-year, does it have to in turn go on the audit plan and get approval by the council? And I know, you know, certainly a couple of emails back and forth with you and I, it seems as though you were hinting that that was the procedure. And so I just want to clarify that that is not the proper procedure.
Right, well, my understanding of reading the city, city ordinance, uh, and also the Acts of two thousand eight, which is Mass General Laws, is that the city council can modify the audit plan that I'm proposing. When I say modify, they could not add to it, but change out the components uh by majority vote. But during the course of the year, once the audit plan is in effect and then there's a special request made by management or city council, then I, as the internal audit director, could decide to take on or not to take on such special requests.
Fair enough. I thi- I think my, my questions are answered. Are there any other questions from the council, Counselor Whitfield?
Are we at that question now that I was originally asking? Are we at the?
I, I think so. Yes, yes, we are.
So I seen on another document that there was like three hundred and sixty hours available for like mayor, city council, special request, I guess, and so, um, I didn't know that those hours could be spiked out.
So, um, my understanding um of the city ordinance and my powers is that I, as the department head, like, like any department head determines how resources are allocated. Uh, so that sixty hours that we allo- that I allocated for a special request, doesn't matter from, from whom is what I'm allocating for special requests.
Okay, so if you get a special request, let's just say from the administration or two, and they take up three hundred hours, but you get a request from city council that's just as important, but came in or more important, but came in after that request, and then there's only sixty hours left, that would have to go on the next year's audit or something?
Well, I would have to, you know, determine to see what impact it has on the city. Let's say it, your, uh, the request was urgent and had an immediate impact on the city, then I would change my, change the audit plan to ensure that special request got addressed in the current year. If it could wait, then maybe, maybe move, you know, pushing it back to the next year's audit plan. But again, it would have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Order to Know, and to Order to Know's credit. Uh, we've only had one uh audit request uh from the city council since I've been on the council and he was able to accommodate that request. And so.
No, that's not true because I requested something about the neighborhood councils that um was not approved, so.
You require, okay, so I'm not, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not aware of that. Um, and so, uh, you know, I could only speak for what it is that, that I'm, that I'm aware of, certainly since I've been on the council based off of, uh, you know, being chair of the subcommittee of the audit, of the audit subcommittee. Uh, there only have been one that has gone through the audit subcommittee in terms of a request. And so if you've had some other requests that haven't been heard, uh, you know, I'll let Order to Know certainly speak to that. It would seem to me that if we can allocate five hundred hours to the administration to conduct an audit similar to the healthcare benefits, which I think is extremely important, we ought to have some time that can be devoted to the city council for their audits. Counselor Walsh. Uh, you're muted, Counselor Walsh.
Counselor Hirsch, I was just curious, and I have to tell you, I'm glad I attended this meeting because I'm certainly learning a lot. Uh, thanks for all the information and I'm sure a lot of hard work has gone into this. And I was just curious to know, you said you got a lot of requests. Well, I was just wondering how many requests you deny, or do you do most of them? And Counsel Whitfield just made a point.
So there, again, it's, uh, I take uh every request, uh, I consider it. Uh, I do a, a risk analysis and I determine whether the audit is worthwhile to undertake. Um, again, I look at the impact uh that it has on the city's operation. Uh, there's certainly uh audits uh that I, I have uh denied because I felt, feel as though that uh there wasn't much of an impact to the city. Um, I may not have been um, may have improved my process in terms of communicating all the reasons why it didn't have an impact on the city. I will certainly make sure that that gets conveyed in any uh requests that I deny. Uh, and not to say that just because I deny something in the current year doesn't mean I will never reconsider it. Uh, it could always come up again uh in a future audit, but I, I am always open for special requests. I am always wanting to improve cities' processes to make sure that risks are uh mitigated and that the city works best for its citizens in terms of allocating resources.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Walsh, and I think to both Counselor Walsh and Counselor Whitfield's point, what would be helpful for me, since I don't know, excuse me, uh, Counselor Whitfield, when you actually requested that, uh, what would be helpful for me, Order to Know, is if those requests uh at some point in time came before the audit subcommittee, just so we're made aware of what those requests are um, and uh, you know, a- and allow you the opportunity to expound upon why it is that you deny those requests, especially if it comes from a member of the city council.
Will do.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the, from the council? Seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.